All right, I'm gonna get started. As a preliminary matter, this is Beth Cassavant, Chair. This is the March 26, 2021 Meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. John LeBeau.
Present.
John Samia.
Present.
Morris DiPaolo.
Present.
James Kane.
Present.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kevin Mizikar.
Present.
Valerie Clemmie.
Present.
This meeting, open meeting of the Board of Selectmen, is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. The order allows public bodies to meet remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by Google Meet as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please be sure to press star six to mute your device. This meeting will not feature public comment. Please wait until I open, oh, there's no public comment, please. See, finally, each vote will be taken by a roll call vote. So we are going to move to the first. Actually, it's the second item on the agenda since we're called to order, which is to review an act to place the following ballot question on the May 4, 2021 Annual Town Election Ballot pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 1/2. And the question reads, shall the town of Shrewsbury be allowed to assess an additional $9.5 million in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of funding municipal and school operating expenses for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021? So I will turn it over to Mr. Mizikar. I believe you have some slides for us.
I do, thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I'll just ask the board in whatever level of detail if there's any specific items that you would like me to touch on. I have a couple of things that I want to be sure that we look at before your vote. And as I begin to open up this slide presentation, I did request from the town accountant today an update on our local receipts. And unfortunately, at this point, we're still, we still have over $2.5 million to collect. So on a percentage basis, we are roughly 80% collected. But my biggest concern is that motor vehicle excise tax, they're still over $2.1 million to be collected in order to meet our budget. So I do remain concerned that we are even going to meet our revenue projection for local receipts this year, despite the fact that it's almost $2.6 million lower than we actually received in fiscal year 19. And that has certainly been one of the challenges that we've discussed. We spent a lot of time at your meeting on Tuesday reviewing the status of the American Rescue Plan and the stimulus. I don't have any additional information for you today beyond what we talked about there. I do have all my slides, but I'm going to proceed through those slides. I'm happy to review anything else on those that you would like to talk about. I did just want to set the stage again for everyone prior to this vote. We're looking at a situation where the school department's requests and the level services for municipal operations would require approximately $6 million in additional revenue than we have available at this point in time. This is largely caused by structural deficit in that many of our revenue categories are stagnant or given the pandemic have declined in recent years. Certainly, property taxes are able to be increased by 2.5% and then add new growth to that. But when we look at our second largest revenue category of state aid, it was flat between fiscal year 20 and 2021. Local receipts declined year over year. That's our third largest revenue category. And we utilize special other available funds to help offset the tax levy, like funds from Selco and the use of free cash in the budget to reduce the levy. And those are stagnant over prior years and have been for quite some time. So even though our largest revenue category can grow and did grow by, you know, 2.5% plus new growth, without any growth in those other revenue categories, we're not even experiencing 2.5% new revenue year over year that can be used for ongoing operations.
That can be used for.
So with regards to the override models we presented, we looked at a number of them and the board has focused on setting expenditure caps at four and a quarter for the educational budget and three and a half for the municipal budget with a $9.5 million total override request with a four-year commitment to not coming back to the taxpayers and residents for any additional override questions. That $9.5 million is greater than the $6 million deficit in order to get us that full four-year duration. And accompanying that $9.5 million request is a proposal to use an override stabilization fund that would be requested and established at the annual town meeting where we take any revenue above and beyond the growth that's required for the annual growth factors or any additional revenue that comes in, apply that into the override stabilization fund, save that for the latter years of the override commitment and have a much more steady flow of new revenue into the operating budget year over year. This is just a little bit more simplistic form of that on how, or a simplistic look at that on how we would use the override stabilization fund. So to put it very clearly, the summary proposed use of the override in fiscal year 22, $5.1 million in additional revenue would go to the school department. $1 million would go to municipal departments. $300,000 would be used to offset a reduction of free cash. The best way to get ourselves away from a fiscal cliff is to stop the use of one-time revenue for ongoing operations. So we'd reduce the amount of free cash in half that we otherwise would have proposed without an override. And then $3.1 million would go into the override stabilization fund. And this is something that we would detail out each and every year, how we put money into the override stabilization fund, where the new revenue is going, and how much is going out of the override stabilization fund as we get into the latter years. If we look at a $9.5 million request, override request, that alone would increase the tax rate $1.62 based upon the FY '21 tax rate and total values. Looking at, looking at those funds and how it breaks down on a property value basis, our quote average single-family tax bill of which 59% of homes are valued at or less than $481,819 would see an impact of $704.34 per year. And finally, before we go into any other discussion or questions, I just did want to note, it's often talked about where Shrewsbury or how Shrewsbury compares to other comparable communities. Comparable communities defined for the most part on this slide as communities that have a similar tax base, similar sized population. I say tax base, I'm looking at assessed values, total parcels, and other similar characteristics, similar population. And then we also included three of our neighbors, Grafton, Northborough, and Westborough. You can see we use these communities on almost every comparison that we share with the public. This is used during our classification and compensation study. And it's a new quantitative analysis, looking at all 351 communities to compare ourselves most closely and fairly. You'll see Shrewsbury falls in the bottom third of this chart. The average single-family home paying $6,355 per year. Our neighbors to the east and in Westborough pay $10,003 in their average single-family home. So the red line across this shows the average tax bill as a percentage of income. So it looks at per capita income and the amount of that per capita income that is spent on local property taxes. And Shrewsbury is the lowest of any community on this chart with 12.18% of income on average per capita going to pay local property taxes. And that's, those are the main points that I wanted to share and kind of refocus the discussion with the board. And I'd be happy to walk through any of the prior slides with you in more detail or answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I think the estimated tax bill impact slide is one that's important for our board and for the community. I think people are kind of wondering where they would fall in line with that. Are there any questions for Mr. Mizikar?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Kane.
One of the reasons we're meeting this afternoon was to give Kevin and others additional time to receive any clarity regarding the anticipated levels of specificity around federal aid. Kevin, I think I take from your intro that you got nothing new or particularly clarifying since our last meeting.
That's 100% correct. And I did note even the governor at his press conference yesterday says he thinks it'll be another two to three weeks until we have any new information on those funds.
But I seem to recall as well, as the specificity comes forward and we understand if it's more clearly to be used in water and sewer, our conversation the other night was that we would therefore hold off on any further rate hikes and use that money to offset those possible rate hikes. Am I correct in my recollection, Madam Chair? Or Kevin?
Go ahead, Mr. Mizikar.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. I mean, that's, you know, that's the board's commitment, I know, certainly my commitment. We don't ever take any of these endeavors lightly. We don't have any conversation regarding increasing rates, whether it be the property tax rate or utility rates, without doing a thorough analysis. And we don't want to raise it a dollar more than we have to. So a large portion of the most recently discussed sewer rate included significant capital improvement projects, which seem at least at a high level to fall under the eligibility for stimulus funding use. And if that is the case, there's no reason to do anything else but to use those stimulus dollars to lower the impact on our ratepayers and pay for those costs.
So if that is an element that I will think about as a capital expenditure in the operating budget, as further clarity becomes obvious to all and uses and any entangling agreements or strings, we have until, my recollection is November, to make further adjustments in just how much of this authorization we actually use, if approved by the voters. There's no set guarantee that we will use all of it. Am I correct in that recollection?
100% correct, yes. I mean, the benefit of stimulus funds is that we seem to be able, will likely be able to use it to offset some of the revenues that we have lost. And for, if we are able to do that, then that would enable us, since we were also requesting an override for the same purpose, we just wouldn't have to use the override funds for that, that purpose if it comes to fruition, which means the tax rate would not have to go up the full amount that we're projecting right now, which again would be another benefit to the taxpayer. And we can actually do that pretty seamlessly without even just any time before the tax rate's set by the end of November, November 30, 2021.
You're muted, Mr. Kane.
Thank you, thank you very much. So based on what we know, based on what we don't know, and based on what we think we need to know, this question is before us today, but if it should pass, we have ample time to fill in those blanks and buffer any total impact that may or may not be voted today. Am I correct in that ultimate, ultimate arrival of a, of a statement of where we are?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Mr. Mizikar, you mentioned the excise tax being $2.1 million outstanding. Is that something that falls under the revenue bucket that could be something that we use federal dollars for if we do end up being short? I know we talked a little bit about how we use that revenue replacement.
Yes, that definitely seems to be an eligible use that we could use stimulus dollars to balance this current fiscal year's budget if necessary and then apply it to more, I think, favorably in future years. In some ways, you know, a lower amount of, you know, we're trying to find the greatest impact and determine how much revenue has been lost. So once we understand that better, that will help us with our planning going forward. But yes, the stimulus funds seem to be able to be used for that in the future.
Okay, Mr. DiPaolo, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mizikar, you said we were at 80% on the collection of excises. How does that compare to percentage last year?
So we're not, we're not at 80% on the collection of excises. We're 80% overall collections on local receipts.
Okay.
On a bottom-line basis. We're still about $2.1 million shy of our $6 million estimate for motor vehicle excise tax. So I don't know specifically off the top of my head, I can actually look. But normally, by the time we get to the end of March, we're at or near our budget amount because the largest billing for motor vehicle excise tax comes due by the middle of March. This year, it was March 18. My figures are current as of March 19 that I'm referring to. So in a normal year, we would be at 95% or greater on motor vehicle excise taxes by the time we hit April. So we're definitely not going to achieve that this year.
Can, can you remind us, when, when do the commitments do? Is it by June 30?
No, they, they were, they were due by March 18. So any, there's $2.1 million in outstanding motor vehicle excise tax that we've billed that has not been paid. There's no extension on the due date this year.
Okay, actually, if you're going to compare it to a year, it'd probably be 2019 because then we drop off the cliff when the governor moved the requirement to pay many months out.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and so if I look at motor vehicle excises here, we've only collected 65% of what we've built, or 56, excuse me, 65% of our budgeted amount.
That's surprising. Okay, thank you, that's all I have at the moment.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, and I guess we can move to a vote.
Madam Chair, actually, can I just comment on a couple of things, I guess, before we get there?
Of course.
So just a couple of points to summarize, and we talked about this on March 2. We've talked about it. I think generally, history's not always helpful, but in this case, I think it's instructive and just to revisit real briefly that we've been looking at our town finances for a long time. Back in 2007 and 2013, we had two separate fiscal study committees. And the key takeaways back in '07, there are no major opportunities for the town to increase revenues from current sources. And there's no simple suggestions to resolve our town's financial condition. And in 2013, the key takeaway is really six years later that there are no viable or realistic alternatives to reduce the expenditures of town government. And the departments have achieved every level of efficiency that is feasible. And the question back in 2013 is, or was, what kind of community do we wish to be? And in 2014, when the override was put on the ballot, the Board of Selectmen, our board, at Ash Shrewsbury Residence, and this is, this is instructive because it's very similar to what we're looking to do today, that we're asking residents whether they wish to continue the levels of educational and municipal services with which our residents have come to expect and greatly value, or if they believe that such service is now simply too expensive to support. And accordingly, the town should transform itself into a very different community. Back in 2014, there was a commitment that an override wouldn't solve the town's structural deficit, but rather it would provide up to a five-year solution to deal with the town's structural deficit. And in fact, we ended up getting seven years from that. And it took COVID pandemic to exacerbate the challenge by probably a year. But what's important is June 2014, the commitment made to Shrewsbury that was met or exceeded. And that is really what we face today, right? So seven years later, we have a structural deficit. The structural deficit has been worsened by the pandemic. And it's a question about where we go from here. And I think it's just important to remind ourselves, as well as folks who are watching this, understanding it's 4 o'clock on a Friday, that we've gone through every iteration of the budget, looked at long-term planning, to look at every alternative. And what I believe is presented today, in my opinion, is, is that together with the commitment that we agreed upon with the school committee and the long-term commitment that we've also committed to for years and the caps that are here, I think that this is the, in my opinion, it'd be the best step forward to make sure that we can maintain the community, in some instances, slightly improve the community and municipal services in particular, a community that we've all come, moved to, and provide good services that we all expect. So I think this is a very important time for us that this will define who we are. And it's up to us as leaders to recommend who that, who we are as a community. But also important for our community to understand that this will set forward where we go. And I hope that they follow what we're recommending or I'd like to recommend to put on the ballot in terms of making sure that as a community going forward, that we are a vibrant community and not going down the path of what I talked about in 2014 will be significantly different from what all of our community has expected and grown accustomed to. So I'm hopeful that the plan is presented and that we've gone through many times over the last several months and even months before that is something that can come to fruition. So thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. LeBeau.
And apologies again, board members, for my, my very surprising technological issues that I'll try to figure out. I honestly, I think most board members have said what needs to be said. I am in agreement with what I've heard. I think certain comments that Selectman Samia just said relative to the fact of the, what happened in 2014, what we said into, what we said we would do in 2014, that we've honored that promise. I mean, actually, as mentioned, we've gone years past how long we stated that we would not come back for an override. And this time, we're doing it in even a more formal process with certain documents that have been created and agreements that have been made with the elected school committee. So I am in supportive. I know, Madam Chair, you had asked a few minutes ago that we're moving towards a vote. And I simply want to ask, what is the proper motion? Is the proper motion to move that the board, that I use the certified vote draft document before us? I mean, not read it all, but to include the actual question? Is that what the desired motion should be, the appropriate motion should be?
Mr. Mizikar.
Yes, yes, it should be. It should include the entire question that you wish to ask and then.
Right, okay.
Direct us to send that information to the town clerks for inclusion on the May 4 ballot.
Mr. LeBeau, before you do though, I want to make sure that other colleagues, because I know, I'm not sure that Mr. DiPaolo or Mr. Kane have any other comments to make.
Sure.
I know that. Go ahead, Mr. DiPaolo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Mr. Samia put it very well. But I'd just like to add, when we, when we voted for the, when the town voted for the New Beale School, you know, the board and the manager at the time had anticipated that we would have enough funding to open the school and keep the budget going, at least in the first couple of years. We did not anticipate back in 2017, or whatever year it was, that the pension would run into a little hiccup. And we changed the funding schedule to actually help, help the town in the future. That pension money or not having it has complicated the situation quite a bit. You add that to pandemic, which nobody could have predicted. And I think you see that we pretty much would have had the funds, I've been very close to having the funds to close this budget gap within the levy limit. And that obviously did not happen. But I do think we made a strong commitment in 2014. I really think working together with the school department, that we've made a very strong commitment, committing to, the last time we said we wouldn't come back for at least four years. This time, we're saying we're not coming back for at least four years. And this is how we're going to do it. And these are the spending limits that each section of government has. So I think it's a very strong commitment. I know that, you know, middle of pandemic is not the best of times. And I don't think we would have picked this time. But the fact is, with all the analysis and that's been done, we cannot move forward with our town government the way it operates right now if, if we don't have this override. We still have the outstanding issue of what happens if Beale doesn't open. We voted for a $93 million school, all of us in town, thinking that we would have the funds to open it. Nobody anticipated that this would happen. So we've got the issue with Beale. We've got the issue of being able to provide municipal service and education in a way that we've become accustomed to. I think we need to have, I don't see a lot of, I think we're as lean as we can be. And I, and I am very fearful of what the impact is going to be on the service levels throughout the town if this doesn't pass. So you can't always pick your time. But I think we've done the due diligence to understand that we need to move forward with this. And I would just add that it's obvious already that not, if the state's telling us they're not even going to hear anything on this stimulus money for another two to three weeks, we can't plan on that starting on July 1. There might be some coming, it might not. And even if it does, we don't know the restrictions. And we know in any case, it's a, it'll help plug a hole for maybe a year. So for all those reasons, I am strongly in favor of asking the question. And I hope that the residents of town see the work that's been done and understand why we have to do this now. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I have to agree with, oh, Mr. Kane, did you want to say something?
I simply wanted to say that I think in the meetings leading up to this meeting and in the comments made earlier today, we have covered it well. Thank you.
Thank you. I just had a few brief comments also. I agree with you, Mr. DiPaolo, we would not have picked this time. And I think if someone had asked me a few months ago if I thought we'd be sitting here asking the community to consider a $9.5 million, they were wrong. But I think the work that we have done. But I think the work that we have done as a board with the manager, with the members of the school committee, with Dr. Sawyer, with Mr. Collins, leading up to our two public meetings of our policymaking boards and the resulting agreement between our boards and the residents as part of a sustainable, long term solution to the structural deficit that threatens our educational and municipal services, leave no other option. And I don't want to speak for everyone, but I do believe that we all feel a collective responsibility to be completely transparent with the taxpayers and the voters, and that we've done that. In bringing forth this question and working through this issue over the past few months so that there can be this community decision around the future direction of our town in the form of a vote. And I just want to make sure that the community recognizes that we as a board know that there will be people who will not support this measure. And there will be people who will support it regardless of the amount that we're asking for. And there will be people who will want to support it, but they are unable to due to their financial situation. And it's that group that most concerns me, as I know that the impacts of COVID have made daily life a challenge for so many, and that's why it's very important to me, as I know it is for the rest of the board, that we take every available opportunity to us to use the federal money to reduce the impact on taxpayers wherever possible, as we discussed with possibly being able to do sewer projects with that money instead of raising rates. I was elected to this board to preserve the quality of life that we all enjoy and greatly value, and that's the reason why I moved to this community, and that's the reason why many people move to this community for the schools, for the town services. And that's why I do not see any other viable path forward that would severely diminish the school and town services other than this override. And I am very proud of the long term solution for the ongoing financial issues that we grapple with every year, and I believe that we have a clearly defined, sustainable, long term plan and agreement with the school committee that the residents and the residents that will transform the way we think about the budget process and engage with each other about that process. And even if the community decides on May fourth not to support this override, I hope that that collaborative relationship between our board and the school committee will continue as we strive to do the very best for the residents of this community. So if there are no further comments, Mr. LeBeau, you can go ahead with the motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And yes, this is not the time we'd like to do this, but we feel that we must do it and we never take these votes lightly. We understand the impact that they have on the community. I would like to move that the board place the following ballot question on the May fourth, two thousand twenty one annual town election ballot pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter fifty nine, Section twenty one C, known as Proposition Two and a Half. Question one. Of course, my computer goes down. How the town of Shrewsbury be allowed to assess an additional nine million, five hundred thousand dollars in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of funding municipal and school operating expenses for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty one? And then there's an area to vote yes or to vote no. And I further move that pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter fifty four, Section forty two C, we inform the town clerk of this action by the board.
Second.
There's no further discussion? Mr. LeBeau?
Hi.
Mr. Samia?
Hi.
Mr. DePaolo? You're muted.
Hi.
Mr. Kane?
Hi.
And myself, I. All right, so that was the only item on the agenda for this afternoon. I do realize that this was a very quick thirty five minute meeting on a Friday afternoon. I would appreciate that people who are looking for more detail go back through the video library offered by Shrewsbury Media Connection, you're able to watch hours of discussion regarding this topic that brought us to this point today. So I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. LeBeau?
Hi.
Mr. Samia?
Hi.
Mr. DePaolo?
Hi.
Mr. Kane?
Hi.
And myself, I. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good weekend, everyone.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.